No moved.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Oh, did somebody second down there, I thought?
No, but I can second.
Second.
Yeah, that's Margaret seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, it's approved as presented tonight. First line of business is we're going to have our public hearing. We have to open it up first for Teresa's going to come up and go over the budget. And we now open the public hearing at 7:01. Would you like to take the podium, please? Just let me give them a little, just the ground rules first, so we know if there's anybody in the audience that has any questions. When she's done, we're going to have the board ask questions first. Would like to have her go through it first, and then if there are any questions, we'll get them answered as you go. And anybody that wants to come up from the public can come up and ask. So Teresa, you sat.
Aye.
Thank you very much.
So tonight is the official presentation of the Township of Rosales budget for the 2526 fiscal year. This is the culmination of several months of work with myself, all the department managers. We spent the last week of February meeting individually with the department managers and committees. That included myself, the township manager, the township supervisor, the township treasurer, the board liaison, and the commission chair. And after that, we also had a study session last Wednesday for the board, for the managers to present a summary of the budget to the entire board. So the first part of the public hearing is our truth and taxation hearing. So the, this slide is a summary of all of the townships, millages, and, and millage rates and taxable values. So the last two columns are the final figures for 2024. It shows what our actual levy was for 2024. So in 2024, every year, the county determines if we have a millage reduction factor. For the 22 and 23 taxures, the township did not. The factor was 1.0. In 24, we ended up having a factor of .9941. So just a small inflation adjustment. So that's what those 2024 levy amounts are. Those were the actual amounts that were levied in 2024 with a total of 12.83 mils was our current, for the current year. The biggest change for the current year was, was the removal of the three mils for the SSES debt that had been on the taxpayers' tax bills for about 15 years. Moving forward to 2025, we had a, going from a taxable value of just under $776.5 million to an estimated taxable value for 2025 of $800 million. And we rolled forward the 2024 levies because we won't know from the county if we have a millage reduction factor until about May. So we left it at, that we assumed it would be 1.0. So for 2025, the changes in the levies are the judgment bond. There will be no, there would be no millage for the judgment bond. We still do have two years of payments to make, but we have received enough in tax collections over the last 10 to 12 years to, to have the funds available to make those two payments without any additional assessment to the taxpayers. So that one mil was reduced, or removed, I'm sorry. And then new for the 2025 taxure is the wastewater treatment plant millage. Those bonds were sold in March of 2023, but for the wastewater treatment plant, we deferred assessing any millage until the 2025 tax year, and that is .95 mils. Also, for the first year, for the toll bridge, we are scheduled to purchase and have the closing of the toll bridge on, on March 31st. So for the 2025 tax year, the estimated millage is at the minimum of the range that was stated in the ballot language of 1.6745 mils. So the total estimated mils levied for 2025 is 14.45 mils.
Hey Teresa, this shows the fire equipment and recreation millages expiring this year. Is that a error?
It expires in, at December 31st of those years, so we have one more year.
I see. Okay. So that's a, that's a fiscal year date, not a calendar year date.
It's, it's December 31st of those years.
So the recreation fund will cease on the December 31st of 2025?
So that's, I'm sorry, that should have been updated to 2026. Actually, that should have been updated because of the renewal that we, that we had in 2024.
Okay.
Which one should have been updated? The rec or the?
I'm sorry?
Which one should have been updated?
The fire equipment that was, was 2025 and the, that date, I, I will have to double check.
Okay.
It's not due this year, though.
Okay.
It's coming here.
And the rec, the rec department as well?
Correct.
Okay. Just, just to clarify, if the, if the renewal, it can be treated as a renewal if there isn't, hasn't been a collection date that's occurred since the expiration. So if you, if your last collection is December 31st of '25, and your next collection that you wouldn't be able to because it's expired was December 31st of '26, so long as the election takes place in November before that next collection that would have occurred that you're not able to because it expired, then it can still be a renewal. Okay.
So the 2025s are, that are correct because the, going to the voters would happen in 2026.
December of '25, we're talking.
Yes, correct. So it's the end of the year, so we are still able to assess the millage on, under the current millage for, for the 2025 tax year.
So the recreation department, if we wanted to continue to exist, is going to need a millage renewal in 2026. Okay.
2026, the end, November of 2026.
Right.
Yes.
Yeah, or whatever election. Okay.
So going to the, the next slide, it just shows a history of the taxable values for the township. It continues to increase, and like I mentioned before, there was a 3.1% increase in the taxable value from 2024 to 2025. The next slide shows a history of the township millage, total millages. As you can see, with, with removing the sewer debt, removing the judgment bond millage, and even with adding the wastewater treatment plant millage and the toll bridge millage for 2025, our total estimated mils is 14.46, and that's, that's the, except for 2024, it's the lowest amount that the township has had in, in the last 10 years. Any questions on the taxes? So overall budget assumptions, the, you know, the township has its general fund, it has about 13 special revenue funds. It has one debt fund, and it has, now it will have three enterprise funds. So overall, the budget assumptions that were used when preparing the budgets by all the departments. So the comparison from, as we're comparing the, the 2526 budget to the 2024, 2025 original budget. The 2025 estimated taxable value that was used in the budget was 800 million, a 3.1% increase, and one mil is 800, represents $800,000. The millage rates are the same as 2024, except for the decreases in the judgment bond levy and the addition of the wastewater treatment plant levy and the toll bridge millage. Salary increases throughout the budget were per the wage scales in the union contracts. POAM was a 3% annual increase. TPOAM has a 2.5% increase. And then a 2.5% cost of living adjustment and market adjustments for full-time, non-union employees. For the health insurance, our 2025 premiums, we had an increase of 15.3%, not necessarily because we had a lot, a lot of medical claims. Actually, we actually did very well in the medical claim area. But where the significant increase was of almost 40% was in the prescription coverage. Because the, the prescription, the pharmaceutical industry found out, like, their cost of certain drugs was simply getting really out of hand. And before they could get things under control, they saw the, the cost that that was being incurred because of using those new drugs that, that were available. So the premiums increased 15.3%. The township is under PA 152, which means that the township can only pay up to the hard cap amounts established by the state of Michigan each year. So for 2025, that only increased 0.2%. So our increase in, in premiums, we had a, we used up our, where we were below the hard cap in 2024, we used most of that up with the 15.3% increase. And then our total cannot, was capped at the hard cap amount, and now, and the employees pay the excess over the hard cap through pre-tax payroll deductions. The MERS retirement cost increase, based on the December 31st, 2023 actuary report, effective for one of '25, we have an increase of 9.8%. So our, the township's total minimum payments went from $1,875,000 to just over $2 million. The next slide is a, an overall comparison of the general fund from the current proposed budget to the, the current year's actual budget.
I want to stop before we move to the next slide. I apologize.
That's okay.
I'm going to ask about the salary increases for the wage scales for the non-union. So regardless, this year, with a balanced budget, we're giving everybody who's non-union a 2.5% raise already, correct?
Correct, with a, we have a balanced budget with the 2.5% cost of living increase.
With the cost of living increase. And can we, can we talk about the MERS again, where it's going up, up to 2 million?
Sure. So the, we, every year, we have an actuarial report, and it projects out for the next two, it's a rolling two years. What our costs will be, and I actually have some, some, a couple of graphs coming up shortly, if, if we can get to that, and then maybe talk about MERS a little bit more then.
That's fine. If you have something related on, that's fine. I'm totally good with that. And healthcare, I understand. You talk about, so, and above the hard cap, with the, our employees have to pay above, what, what, would costs go above the hard cap, correct? You said they'd pay that through pre-tax, which is nice.
So if the Blue Care Network plan had the, the lowest cost for the employees, and that's they're paying the amount over the hard cap. So for single, actually, there's no payment currently. For two-person, it's $120 per month, and for family, it's $70 a month. And yes, those are correct. Ever since the hard cap was established, a, a lot of times, there's that disparity between two-person and family because two-person, you know there's two people.
Correct.
Family, you have a much larger population to spread costs over. So that's why the, that differential, a lot of times, family is lower than two-person.
I, I will also mention that the township does offer, I believe, three healthcare plans. Am I correct with that, Teresa? Two or three? I mean, we have the POS plan, and then we have, I believe, two other PPO-type plans. So over the years, we've modified the plan offerings so that the employees have, you know, lower cost options. Because on some of the PPO plans that we had, had in the past, some of the cost share, basically the cost over the hard cap amounts can be in the $1,200, $1,300 a month range. So we used to have those plans, but now we've worked with our broker to provide other offerings that have lower employee cost shares. So, and the PPO plan, which is the, the, the cost plan that Teresa just mentioned, is kind of like an HMO, but it's within the BCBS network. So.
So we, currently, we offer a Blue Care Network plan, a Blue Cross Blue Shield PPO, that's a high deductible plan. And also, the Blue Care Network is a high deductible health plan, but it's at the, the lowest amount that it can be. By definition, the IRS establishes every year what is considered a high deductible health plan. So for 2025, it's $1,650 and $3,300 for the deductibles. And the, and then the third plan is a Blue Cross Blue Shield. It's not a high deductible health plan, and there's a health reimbursement plan with it. Because of the additional cost over the hard cap amounts that the state establishes, it's, those are very expensive plans for the employees. So between 2024 and 2025, most employees have migrated to the Blue Care Network plan. We do have a couple employees on the high deductible Blue Cross PPO plan, and there's just some, some retirees on the, the Blue Cross Blue Shield, lower deductible with the health reimbursement account.
The high deductible, is that a $3,300 per person?
That's family.
That's family.
It's $1,650 per, per, per person.
That's out of pocket, before the plan kicks in?
Correct. Yep, so, and that includes both medical and prescription.
I think that's, I'm sorry, go ahead, Teresa.
So if you have a prescription, you have an expensive prescription, that you go in January and you, the cost is $1,500, you have to pay that. But that's going towards that, if you're single, that's $1,650 deductible.
Right.
It's both.
So just to clarify, the $1,650 is the IRS determination of a high deductible plan. The deductible expense on the, on the Blue Care Network plan that we have is $2,000 per person. $4,000, $4,000 for the family.
Our current plan for Blue Care Network is $2,000 and $4,000.
Okay. The township does offer a wellness plan, where if you do a variety of different things, such as get your annual physical, we'll provide up to $2,000 to an HSA to help combat some of that deductible expense. But above and beyond that, it's the employee's responsibility for any deductible expenditures, expenses, or out-of-pocket, or co-pay expenses. So.
Thank you. I'm sorry. I didn't mean to hold everybody up. I apologize.
And the last assumption is that, you know, for our property liability and auto insurance, it does not renew until middle of May. So right now, I'm just working with our insurance agent to, for the renewal. So we used an estimate of a 10% increase over the prior year cost based on historical increase, percentage increases. The next slide shows that our, our general fund comparisons in total. The first line, general fund revenues, you can see there's relatively small changes, but they're, they're all increases for a total increase in the general fund revenue of $321,000. If you look at the general fund expenditures, most departments have very minimal changes. The, the biggest, the biggest ones are, you know, elections had a decrease of $22,500, $600, and that's because we had three elections in 2024, and we're not anticipated to have any elections in 2025. The big, biggest changes were under professional services. There is a decrease in the budget of $206,000. That's due to the fact that in the current year, we had budgeted costs for our due diligence work for purchasing the toll bridge. So we're not going to have to incur that expense in the future. And also for the building maintenance and grounds, that's where the bond payment for the, the, the construction and the improvements for the township hall were from $2,000. So we made the final payment on April 1st of last year, so we don't have that principal and interest payments anymore. The police department, their, the budget, it was projected to have an increase of $516,000. If you look at the overall total on the general fund comparison, we, we do have a balanced budget. So the increase with the police department is, is covered by other areas of the general fund having lower expenditures than the prior year. There, the, the projected excess expenditures for the police department is about $285,000 for the year. And that is covered, like I said, that's covered by other areas of the general fund that had lower expenditures for 2025 than 2024. The overall general fund shows an excess of $200,000. That's because we added, we recently acquired a, a property on the island, and with the potential and probability of selling that property, we are estimating the sales proceeds to be about $200,000. Probably a little bit more than that, but we put in $200,000. So that's where the excess, excess revenue came from. So the first line that says general fund revenue, so I know this is probably a little small, but it, that, it, this chart is the detail of that very first line. So you can see the property taxes, franchise fees, our state revenue sharing. Throughout the general fund, there's, you know, I said the taxable value increased by 3.1%. And our millage increased, but the increases in the property tax revenue is smaller than that because when I did the 2024, '25 budget, I didn't have all the complete information for the property tax revenue. So it was budgeted too high, which I am correcting with the amended budget that you'll have at the next meeting. So that's why the, the property tax revenue seems, the change seems a little small.
So is that the increase in the police department revenues then, is from the mils? I can't remember if you said that before.
So when we're looking at the, at the police department, we do include the property tax revenue as part of the police department budget. On the, on the other page, where it says police department revenue, that's just, just from the police department activity. So it doesn't include the property taxes. But when we're looking at the police department as a whole, we do take into account the, we take the property tax revenue plus the specific police department revenue, and then compare it to the expenditures.
And to be clear, and I, I think I brought this up in the, the other session we had about this, but the increase in the police department budget exceeds the entirety of the general fund allocated millage, the general millage, and all of their millages, right? So at this point, that additional money they need would be coming out of other, I mean, effectively out of other functions, right?
It's coming out of, from other departments.
Other departments.
Where we had, we had savings for the year. Yes.
So for the money that's coming out of those other departments for the savings for the year, is this going to be like a recurring thing that you project? Can we move money from one, can we move money, more money to the police department? That's why I'm asking? Or is this not going to be a recurring thing that you're aware of?
It could potentially be a recurring situation, and I think that's something that we need to look at in the near future.
I, I think, and I apologize, if I get my answer might be different, but we need to look at this. This is a situation that we need to look at.
Oh, no, for sure. I agree. I'm just wondering if this is something we might be able to do.
We're definitely going to have to look at a few things, and, because it, I mean, it, we can't continue down the line as it is. This year works, but, well, this is something that we just need to look at.
I mean, it's never going to get cheaper, right?
That's why I was asking if this is something that's going to be recurring, we can move over. Because I understand what it's going to take to run a police department, too.
So we have a five-year plan that was developed and is continuing to be updated based on new numbers because it's constantly flowing. Additionally, it's not as though the police commission is not aware of this, and we are working on it. I think there is. I think there has been, I think we have an understanding now that we need to all work together on the commission and we need to start addressing some of these concerns and how we do that. And we have some next steps in place and I think that's going to also require, like you said, some looking and some discussion with the township as well.
For it to continue, for us to do what we have to do and our fiduciary responsibility, when we're removing money from other areas of the general fund, that's savings, we have to talk about it. It can't continue in this manner for survival. It's a fiduciary responsibility we have to the township. And Margaret, I'm not disagreeing with you. We all got to work on it. The chief has to work on it, the township board, the police commission, but this is not something that can be, it's not something that can be easily fixed, but it's not something that can continue.
I don't disagree and I think this started long before, this is, this is well beyond, let's say, 2022. This was beyond that. So the way the police budget seems to work is there is no good way for them to regain their footing very easily and especially with the situation they have had with just the run of bad luck between FMLAs and we have another officer that has, you know, it might not have been on the job, but he has an injury that has to be addressed. We're talking, we're down on officers, which creates an overtime issue and we could go on and on and this isn't going to be the place where it gets solved, but I want to make sure that we're not, that we're not addressing this thing holistically because this didn't just happen overnight.
No, it didn't happen overnight, but we still have it.
I don't disagree.
And we still have to address it and this isn't the place tonight to address it.
Agreed.
Well, we have a study session on Wednesday, right?
Yeah, let's move on, Teresa, to what we're doing here tonight. I get it and I thank you. Margaret, I'm not cutting anybody off. What?
Just like I had a thought, just, I don't have to be last.
Be quick, please. We got to stay on task.
There's a lot of points here that are being made that are valid and I think that it is wise that we realize that that's something that deserves attention at the appropriate time. Right now, we have these things to do. There's other fish to fry, so to speak, and we can take care of these in the ensuing months.
Okay, let's move on. Thank you.
So one thing I did would like to note is that of the $516,000 increase in expenditures to the police department, $429,000 of that was in salaries and benefits, so things that are contractual. This chart shows just the general fund budget by revenue category. So you can see that the highest source of revenue is our property taxes at 57%, our state shared revenue at 16%. So the total of those two is 73%. So 73% of our, just our general fund budget is from those two sources and then the other areas are smaller percentages. The next chart shows the, how we're using the general fund revenue. These are our uses. So the police department and we put the 33rd District Court with it, that's just over $5 million or 67% of our budget. The next highest use is in administration at 12% and the other areas are 2% to 6%. This chart shows our history of our general fund expenditures. As Jameson pointed out, costs are always increasing, so, but the important thing to note is the green bars are the budgeted expenditures in the general fund each year and the purple bars are the actuals. So we are, we are right at target with what we've appropriated or we are almost always under budget, which is, which is good. The next slide shows the history of the general fund overall. The first stack is the revenues in the general fund, the second stack is expenditures and the third one is the fund balance. So our fund balance has, you know, it took a pretty big increase at March 31st of '24, but if you, you weren't on the board then, but we had a prior period adjustment in the general fund of $975,000 because we were, we had to eliminate and close the escrow fund and put the activity where it belonged and account for it, like we account for everything else showing revenues and expenditures. So that gave us an increase in the general fund revenue. But what that also did is it also, from our fund balance, there were parts of that fund balance that had to be assigned because they were from specific sources for specific reasons. One of the biggest examples of this is the Kraska State donation, that's specifically for the animal shelter. So we keep track of that separately along with like police department donations. When we made that correction at March 31st of '24, the departments that had the biggest impact on that was the police department and the building department. So in summary, for the general fund, our general fund revenue increased by 4.27% in the amount of $321,000. Property taxes increased by $46,000. State revenue sharing is currently stable. We're still working on trying to get the information from the state to let us know what our increase in our state revenue sharing is, but it won't, it is not going to be substantial for this current year. There was only an increase of 2.7%. We're projecting a decrease in cable franchise fees. It's been trending lower than what had been budgeted and then we have the $200,000 estimated sale proceeds from a home that we acquired this year. So part of the revenue in the police department is using some of that assigned fund balance that they have for money that, for specific reasons. So in their revenue, $108,000 of that is from fund balance that is designated just for the police department.
Teresa, what, where does that get pulled from?
It's from the general fund fund balance. So the fund balance is an accumulation of all the years, excess revenues, how the general fund has performed every year. So before the correction we had to make with the escrow fund, that was about $2 million. When we made that correction, we had to move all that, move all the activity from the escrow fund into where it belonged. Most of it was, belonged in the general fund, but because the items in the escrow fund were typically for things that were for a specific reason, like the police department donations, the Kraska State donation for the animal shelter. So if you look at a balance sheet, it doesn't just, in our system, it doesn't just show fund balance. That fund balance is separated. So out of the $2 to $3 million, several hundred thousand are pulled out of the unassigned fund balance, meaning you can use that for anything, into assigned fund balance to keep track of those monies that were brought into the township with specific uses and where we're at with those balances.
Teresa, is a portion of that 108 for money set aside in previous budget years for paid time out upon retirement that you're drawing from to pay that benefit?
Correct. Part of the escrow fund had a line item for severance pay or sick pay, so that we have that in the general fund to offset the costs of some upcoming retirements. We still have to budget for it, but when the year closes out, that specific activity is closed out to each fund balance line item.
So how do you determine how much you're going to use of this revenue fund balance for a specific department like police?
It's discussed during the department meetings. So we had the reserve for sick or severance pay. So we'll use that towards the police chief's retirement.
Right.
The expenses that were budgeted for the animal shelter, we're using the Kraska State and then some of the supplies we specifically designated to be used from the donations that the police department received. So it was, it's discussed with the department managers.
So there's excess funds though in that fund that?
That portion of the fund balance, yes.
Okay.
And if you'd like at the next meeting, I can, I can kind of show you where that is in our records.
Yeah, I'd like, I'd like you to do that, so thank you.
The general fund expenditures in total increased by $121,000. The next bullet point I already mentioned about the, of the $516,000 increase in the police department, 82% was from increases in salaries and benefits and the retirement.
And those are contractual salary increases?
Correct.
Thank you.
They're not all contractual though, right?
I'm sorry?
They're not all contractual though, right?
They are. Well, the police chief, the deputy chief and the lieutenant are non-union positions.
The top three?
And the secretary.
And, and the confidential secretary, confidential, yeah. So there's four, there's four that are not part of the union contract.
And when you refer to salary and benefits, obviously we're talking about not just pay, we're talking about retirement, cost increases, all of those things. So it's across the whole.
That's the whole department though. Just so Mickey, I mean, I know it's your first time with, you know, these budgets this way and I know you understand them, but it is non-union and union benefits though are included in that.
Correct.
There's four non-union included in that.
So let me ask you this, when we pay down our legacy costs, where do the funds come from to pay down legacy costs? Are those general fund or are they something else?
It comes from the general fund or from the departments that those retirees worked in. So retirement comes from each fund where there's the employee. It's charged by where the employee is. So for the retirees, we actually have a separate fund, it's an internal service fund where we fund it by each department of what the health insurance costs are for the retirees. That money goes in there from each fund and then I in turn send the money to the state of Michigan. This, under MERS, we have a retiree funded health vehicle with the state and so I put all that money in at the beginning of the year and then as health insurance is paid, so it's the Blue Care Network or the Blue Cross for those that are retirees that are not 65. It's the Medicare Advantage supplement for those that are 65 or older. When those payments are made, they actually get paid out of that, that internal service fund and then I draw down on the money I put in at the beginning to cover those costs.
Sounds like the healthcare, the retiree healthcare is budgeted. What about the pension costs?
That's also budgeted.
So that's in this budget built in?
Yes, it is.
It's our annual payment for the costs associated with the pension, so.
So not catching up at all, just paying the absolute minimum, right?
But yeah, I guess for lack of a better term, yes. The actuarial that Teresa had mentioned earlier that works for MERS basically gives us an annual contribution calculation to fund the benefit.
The minimum required, right?
Generally, yep.
Okay.
And you can always pay more to that if you're underfunded. You can address underfunding by reducing benefits, moving forward, things of that sort.
But am I remembering wrong? Aren't we pretty underfunded? Like what percentage on the pension?
We're about 5% funded for the health, not the retirement, for the healthcare. For the retirement, we are, for last fiscal year, we were 61% funded and I had multiple conversations this year with our regional manager with MERS and she has assured me that from MERS perspective, we are still doing fine.
Yeah, I would probably say some more on that. Just, I'm an arrest attorney, right? So 61, we need to do something about that.
Well, they want at least 60 and we're at 61. So I have a couple of slides coming up on MERS.
Oh, you do?
Yep.
Okay, sorry to jump ahead. Thank you.
Yep. Additional general fund changes in the communications department, there was a budget increase of just over $40,000 for the replacement of aging and obsolete equipment. The community development department had a decrease of $52,000 due to the removal of retiree severance pay during the current year. There was a person that retired and then that shift between salaries and benefits, so that, there was, we didn't have that for the coming year. And then the removal of the cost for the master plan because it is, it is complete. It's going to, my understanding is going to, coming to the board in April. So we're pretty much done with the expenditures. The $37,500 increase for animal control and animal shelter is covered by the assigned fund balance for a specific funding sources, so we've talked about that. And the last item, the required closure of the escrow fund at March 31st of '24 resulted in additional activity in the police and community development. And when that escrow fund was closed and everything was transferred, it was, it was both an increase in revenue and an increase in expenditures. It was both sides and that resulted in a prior period adjustment or increase in the general fund fund balance. So this is one of the slides from MERS. This comes from our actuarial report, our most recent report. So this, this shows what our funding percentage is and they do make assumptions on rates of return. They use, for 2024, they use 6.93%. Their actual rate of return was over 7%, so that's a good thing. But they also do this chart using lower rates of return so we can compare what our activity would look like. So we are on target to be fully funded by 2039, 2040 and that's, you may think, gosh, that's a long time from now. That's intentional. That is the plan. And then the next chart shows our estimated annual employer contribution. So you can see on 2025, it's about, it's $2 million because our required contribution is $2,075,000 and it is going to keep going up. It will cross $3 million at about 2034 and then once we're fully funded in 2039, 2040, then it will start decreasing.
Teresa, I'd like to ask you a question. This is actuarially calculated, correct?
Correct.
So this is anticipating the mortality of the population?
So Mark, does this help answer the questions that you had earlier?
Yeah, it does. I appreciate that.
Okay. Okay, so next, we're going to move on to our special revenue funds. So we have 13 special revenue funds. I'm not going through all 13 of them. What I did is I grouped them to try to highlight some of the, some of the changes. So for fire operating, fire equipment and public safety building, the overall change increase in the budgets was $148,000. We are anticipated to receive our, in the 23-24 year, we paid 100% for the new aerial truck because we got a $100,000 discount for prepaying and we paid 10% of the ambulance cost. So those are sitting in a prepaid account because we haven't received them yet. So they were put in the current year budget on the chance that we did receive them. So we haven't and we're not scheduled to, so they are put in the budget again for '25, '26. So that's why basically the change of $148,000. So, that's why, um, basically, the change of a hundred and forty-eight thousand is due to the new generator for the public safety building. And then, we, in the fire department, we have, um, more volunteers, um, being recruited and being hired to meet our demand.
But just to clarify, though, like, the new fire truck and the ambulance, I mean, they really save each year to build up for that equipment, right?
Correct, yes.
So, it's not like all of a sudden, they're being hit with the million dollars they've been saving?
No, when, um, during twenty-three, twenty-four, when we got the invoice for the new fire truck, we had, we had the funds in the, in our savings account to, to purchase it. We didn't have to get a loan or anything. The fire department had been to, uh, using the fire equipment millage and saving up for that capital improvement.
Okay, great, thank you.
And it was, oh, I'm sorry.
No, no, you go ahead.
No, but on that point, it was included that Chief Camilleri even got a hundred thousand dollar off by, because we had the money. So, we got a discount of a hundred thousand dollars, which is, I think, being very fiscally responsible for saving and saving that much in the end. So, just a point, thanks.
So, we are scheduled to receive the fire truck by August or September and the, the ambulance before the end of the calendar year. Correct, John?
Correct.
Okay. Just really quick, um, does fire have a five-year plan so we can see their projections and their, their need for, you know, um, equipment and whatnot?
They, they have their equipment also.
Twenty-five years now.
Okay. Is that, is that something we can look at, too?
The commission usually looks at it.
Okay, thank you.
Drug law enforcement, that's the, that's the combination of our federal drug forfeiture fund, our state drug forfeiture fund, our U.S. Treasury forfeiture fund. And new this year is our National Opioid Settlement Fund. So, there's a small increase of eighty-six thousand based on anticipated uses of forfeiture funds and with the addition of the opioid settlement fund. So, um, based on a lawsuit in the pharmaceutical industry, there are structured payments, um, from all the different pharmacy companies. And we have a, a long list of, of annual payments that we're receiving, and there's very specific uses for that. Basically, um, it's to stop opioid use and have the training, dare, at training, dare supplies can be used for this. And so, we are working on a plan. Our, the, um, police department's confidential secretary has been doing a great job of really looking into this to, and comparing, looking at other communities to see what we can use this for to, to help take some of that burden off the police department.
Thanks for highlighting that, Teresa, because she does a really phenomenal job, so I appreciate you mentioning that.
Sure does. Uh, recreation farm, library and block grant, um, increase of eighty-four thousand dollars overall between those four funds. Those are just minor changes throughout each of those funds. So, our block grant fund is typically twenty thousand dollars, really small. And we use it for our senior activities. So, we have been approved for a community development block grant with Wayne County for all over, um, between five and six hundred thousand dollars. But the county is not moving very quickly. So, um, they can't say when it's going to start. I have seen their twenty-twenty-four action plan that says, and we're on the list, um, and the project's on the list, but they are, they just kind of keep pushing things off. So, until we know it's actually going to start, um, then we'll amend the budget for that. But that is, that is not included in the proposed twenty-five, twenty-six budget.
And that's the name of it, the block grant?
A community development.
Community development block grant.
The funding is through the Community Development Block Grant Program. Community Development Block Grant Program, um, is administered by Wayne County, but is, um, provided for by HUD. So, HUD hands the, the money down to the county. The county then facilitates the distribution and management of those funds with the communities within Wayne County that are, um, part of that program. They get a certain amount of money, and, um, each community gets a annual allocation. And then, they have a competitive program for monies above the twenty thousand dollars. The township was awarded a half a million dollars and some change.
And what was the date they were awarded that?
Well, it's a twenty-twenty-four action plan from the county, so it was sometime in the calendar year twenty-four. And they do show on there that they have a targeted completion date of twelve thirty-one, twenty-five. So, um, I, in fact, the, the recreation director and I were going back and forth because I really need to also know what to do with, we had to pay some preliminary costs, and I want to make sure those are accounted for correctly. And I've been working with our auditors to make sure it's handled correctly and trying to get information from the county. First, they said there was an award letter, and then today said, oh, no, there's not an award letter. There's just this, we have an action plan, and that's where it's listed.
Thank you.
So, so we're, we're on hold, but Zaid is, um, actively pursuing this because, you know, now we're getting to the point where we're going to need to use the pool and the pool house. So, um, that kind of puts, makes it difficult with our summer schedule.
Teresa, I had a question. Are, are we aware of any federal monies that can be removed from our, from us by the executive branch, uh, canceling it?
At this point, not, nothing that I'm aware of. The next fund, the indigent defense fund, twenty-twenty-four, twenty-five shows zero because this was another item that was in the escrow fund. It's actually required by the state of Michigan to be its own special revenue fund. And this, this fund is for the public defender program with the Thirty-third District Court. The township gets a grant from the state of Michigan, and then, we, in turn, have to pay that to the Thirty-third District Court based on their expenses every fiscal year. So, I have to report to them quarterly. And then, we do an annual reconciliation. So, the twenty-twenty-four, twenty-five amount will be corrected on the amended budget that, that's coming next, at the next meeting. Open space, uh, there's no current millage for this fund. They are working on, on spending their fund balance. So, their activity, their projected activity dropped a little bit. And based on using, um, spending forty thousand dollars a year, they have about four, they have a fund balance to sustain their, um, activities for about four year, four more years, including the upcoming year. Capital project funds, uh, so we have drain and stormwater maintenance, very consistent activity for the coming year. Um, and we are reserving some money, also, we're able to reserve some funds for future improvements. Bike path maintenance, uh, the budget increased by a hundred and seventy-two thousand. That's using prior year resources for bridge staining, blacktop replacement purchase and replacement of signs and path markings for the coming year. The road improvement fund, that's the fund that has our road maintenance millage plus our, our road improvement, um, millage from the bond issue in twenty-twenty-three. There's a projected decrease in activity of two hundred and fifty-one thousand because we're, we'll be completing the bond project for the road construction and then planning on some joint and crack ceilings. So, overall, costs are projected to be a little bit lower. Our component unit budgets, our, component units are actually legally separate entities, but they have the o- oversight of the primary government. And also, our financial statements would actually be misleading if we didn't include them. So, they are set up as special revenue funds, but they are reported as component units. So, that's brownfield. Very minor change in activity of nine hundred and twenty-three dollars. And one of the plans for the coming year is to update the brownfield plan. Our current plan expires in twenty-twenty-six. Downtown Development Authority, um, shows an increase of twenty-three thousand dollars. So, there were some restructuring of the programs. Their plan is with, for the continuation towards the completion of Lyons Park upgrades. And then, we, that includes the addition of the annual principal and interest payments for the seventy thousand dollar advance that the board approved for the, the DDA because of the pilot tax issue. And that is six, just over sixteen thousand dollars a year. Our, our last area is, um, our enterprise funds. So, our, our current enterprise funds are the airport and our Department of Public Services. For the airport, there is a decrease in overall activity of just under sixty-six thousand dollars. So, that's due to consistent operations with us, with a reduction in capital improvement costs. Our, the current year projects include the purchase of a new bat wing, continuation of updates to the tennis center roof and a build-out of hangar sixty-three. The, uh, Department of Public Services shows an overall decrease of two hundred and twenty-nine thousand dollars. So, there are revenue increases in the service charges, but without increasing the usage rate for water, sewer and refuse. Uh, and that's offset by the reduction in our annual EPA grant. So, we were awarded an EPA grant. When we did the budget for twenty-four, twenty-five, the maximum grant amount is two point five million. So, we initially budgeted for that. That is actually going to be, was split into two projects. The, um, HVAC, um, updates are being completed this fiscal year. And so, that leaves us, and that's about, um, seven, seven hundred thousand dollars. And then, the remainder will be for the citywide sewer upgrades, and that's what's projected for twenty-five, twenty-six. So, instead of having two point five million dollars in revenue and expenditures, we have, um, about one point, one point six. The, the cost is one point nine-six million for the sewer upgrades, but the grant is an eighty-twenty grant. So, we have to, um, they'll reimburse us eighty percent, and we have to cover the other twenty percent. So, starting with April first of twenty-twenty-five, um, we will have a thirds enterprise fund, and that's, that's the Grozeal Toll Bridge. So, we are scheduled to close on the purchase on March thirty-first. So, this is our first projected budget, and it's based on very limited information that's available at this time. The things that, you know, I was able to, um, there is consideration that was given to the free bridge closure for two months. The property tax levy at one point six seven four five mils. The plan is to use some of our operating income for a portion of annual bond payments. The use of some, we received the bond proceeds of twenty-one point eight million dollars in, on February thirteenth. So, about under four, little, just under fourteen million will be used to purchase the bridge. And then, seven point five million will be used in the, in the following year. So, the revenue numbers and the expense numbers are elevated by that seven point five million because we're showing the use of the prior year resources because we got the bond proceeds this year. And the cost of, the engineering costs will be incurred in the upcoming year of twenty-five, twenty-six. So, without those numbers in there, our estimated revenue is about six million dollars, and our estimated expenses are, um, three point five million dollars. We also have RFPs in process for staffing company and operations and maintenance management. And I considered the depreciation on the purchase, bridge purchase. State of Michigan actually had guidelines for that. It's fifty years, um, so that is part of the expenses. And we are not going to be exempt from property taxes until the twenty-twenty-six tax year because we did not, we're not exempt for twenty-twenty-five because we did not own the bridge on December thirty-first of twenty-twenty-four. So, we will have some property tax expense to start with. So, again, it's the, the first projection. And as we go along in the year, um, definitely be able to do some budget amendments. Once we get the RFPs in, we'll have a better idea of the costs. So, this was my best recommended projection at this time.
So, can you school me on something?
I'm sorry?
So, Kevin and I always talk about silos.
Okay.
Can you explain to me which funds can be transferred among departments and which ones can't?
So, you can't transfer, you can't transfer money from one fund to another. All of the, all of the special revenue funds that have a property tax millage, those funds are restricted. They, they are required by law to be used for the intent for the, that the millage states. Grant money is also restricted. It has to be accounted for separately. It, it has to, and you have to have specific expenses and, um, and keep track of things separately. And you can't supplant operations that you already have because, um, the intent of the grants and the, then the forfeiture money is to supplement what you have. So, there are no, there are no funds that help out other funds, other than on a very temporary basis. Just as a matter of practice, when we run our accounts payable check runs or we run our payroll, we have like an impressed account, which is an in-and-out fund. So, we, um, all the payments come out of one fund, but then, we do cover checks at the same time for those other funds to, to cover that expense and record that expense. When I go online and I make the retirement payment, it can only come out of one account. And so, that's the general fund, and I immediately do a journal entry, and I record the inter-fund to show that, you know, Recreation DPW Airport owes the general fund that money. And then, pretty much, once a month, um, with my deputy treasurer, we shore up those inter-funds.
I think with general fund, that anything you get from property taxes, you can allocate which departments you want that to go to, right?
For the allocated, um, the allocated millage for the general fund, which is the one point eight-five mils, that goes in the general fund, and that can be used for any, anything. So, it's historically been used for the police department operations.
Got you.
Yeah, the entirety of the general fund millage money is consumed by the police department. So, you could rea, I guess you could do like a double fund sort of reallocation by giving them more of the state estimated value, or state, not state estimated value, the, uh, state fund sharing, and then, use the other funds for other things. But it would be kind of pointless, wouldn't it? It's all same pot of money.
So, what other funds do we have? Do you have the grants, you have the millages?
So, we have, we have the general fund and, you know, all the special revenue funds that I, that I listed. We have fire operating, fire equipment, public safety building, um.
I mean, ones that can go anywhere. Would it be like what the state reallocates back to us, or?
We can't, but there aren't any.
Okay.
They're all for very specific purposes. Yeah. So, the airport collects rent. Well, that rent money only goes towards airport operations.
But you said if you give the police department more, it comes from other departments. So, how do you take it from other departments?
That department, I think what she was saying, if, correct me if I'm wrong, though. Within the general fund, there's revenue. So, what she's saying is the police department has all the millage money, and any other money that the general fund has, we've had to allocate, I don't know how many, two hundred and eighty or whatever it was, to the police department to balance their budget. And that is general fund line items that they have saved in those areas, and we took their savings and put it to the police department. So, it's still the general fund only. It's not like you took from DPS, we took from the airport, we took from the fire department. That's, you can't do that, that's not legal.
Ju- just to clarify, though, that there are a number of departments within the general fund's umbrella. And, and those would be your police department, basically.
And, and those would be your, police department basically is funded through general fund and their allocated millages, the clerk's office, the treasurer's office, community development, administration, assessing.
Finance.
Finance. If one of those departments needed funding, you either would have to receive more revenue to support that, or it would mean that you would have to cut one of those departments to support another. So for example, if the police department needed additional money, the clerk's office might have to not do something, or communications, or, or finance, or if.
So expensive, Brian.
Number of departments that fall under the general, general fund umbrella. And then as Teresa mentioned, there's other departments that are outside of the general fund umbrella, like the airport, DPS, the toll bridge, so on and so forth, that are on their own. And the general fund can contribute money to them, but they can't contribute money back to the general fund.
Gotcha. Thank you, that's what I was trying to figure out.
That's why he gets paid that.
So there's a distinction between funds and then departments when, in those funds. So we have a lot of small funds that don't have multiple departments. There's only, it's only one, like the library. But there's other funds that have multiple departments, like Recreation Airport, DPS, General Fund. So within that, the save, like Derek said, the other savings are going to offset the excess expenditures in another department.
Thank you, that was very helpful.
So is there a fund, like an overflow or anything where, you know, like you mentioned the, when I asked about the 108, that was police specific. But is there, is there any other fund out there that, you know, you can draw from if you needed to?
No, there is not.
Okay.
So the only thing is that where we, where the fund balance in a particular fund might, is, is split and allocated, and that's what I had, before I closed the escrow fund and had to move everything, the general fund didn't have all these additional fund balance. Fund balance actually has five different categories. And then they're defined, restricted means they're restricted by law, committed means it has to have board approval. I can assign a fund balance without board approval, which is what I did for all of, not to circumvent anything, but that's a qual, that's what it qualified for. To, to separate out that one fund balance number into the, the multiple areas to, to keep track of what, what was separated in the escrow fund.
So just to elaborate on that a little bit, you asked if there's an account that is just a general fund balance? Yes, we have a general fund retained earnings account that does have money in it that is unassigned, is assigned, has various categories within it. And I believe in Teresa's previous slide, it showed what portion of that general fund retained earnings is unassigned, which can be used for whatever purposes the township board chose to use that for. There, there are accounting standards that recommend that the township have a certain amount of unassigned fund balance, basically a rainy day account to fund potential emergency purchases or states of emergency. Let's just say we had a massive storm or something like that, we needed funding to be able to support things. We had bridge issues or something like that, that necessitated emergency response funds or something. You know, that's, that's why they generally say, what is it, 20, 20%?
15 and 20%. And they focus on, on the general fund because typically that's the main operating fund. But there are, you always want to maintain a positive fund balance. If you have a deficit, there's, you have to report it to the state, you have to have a plan for getting, getting out of it. But because the general fund has most of the, the, I don't want to say main operations because every, every depart, every operation in this township is just as important. But the general fund is where they focus and, you know, recommend the minimum fund balance amount so that if, if, it's okay in any given year to budget. You know, right now, we have a, a balanced budget for the general fund. We actually have an excess of 200,000. It's okay to budget a, a deficit for the year. If you know you need $500,000 to, to fix something critical in this building, that's a one-time expense and it's, but you're, by doing that, you've got the fund balance to use, and that fund balance amount is not going negative.
Okay.
And that's the purpose of, of having that. You always want to make sure you have those extra, excess funds in the general fund for such things. And that's the recommended guidelines.
Thank you.
So with the surplus or the rainy day fund like Derek was talking about, I've heard chatter upwards of $2 million. Is, is that the case, or is that not the case? Do we have, not have a rainy day fund or a surplus fund of 2 million?
You actually can't have that.
Say again?
You can't, you are not allowed by governmental accounting standards or the state of Michigan to have a rainy day fund.
So that doesn't exist then? I've heard chatter about it, so that, we don't have that.
Well, I think it's, I think it's terminology.
Wait, 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 hold on. I want to make sure we get this straight.
So we don't have a separate fund that we, you know, we can take money from if we, if we need it. We have a fund balance within our general fund. We have excess funds so that we're prepared if something happens.
Some may call it a rainy day fund. It is fund balance. It's a savings account.
Well, they used, that used to be a big thing.
I want to make sure I get it too. So what is the balance of that?
It's a requirement, right?
What is the unrestricted fund balance currently?
I'm sorry?
What is the unrestricted fund balance in the general fund?
About $2 million.
Okay. And isn't a half a million accounted for because of debt? Or is that, is that not included in that 2 million?
I'm sorry?
Don't we have to have, was it restricted because of debt? Isn't there some of that that has to be restricted because of our debt?
In general fund?
In this general fund fund balance?
No.
Okay.
I'd like to ask your question, but.
I want to make sure you got your answer.
Teresa? Yeah, thank you. That's, I'm good now.
Okay. Okay, go.
Just a joke. I'd like to ask a question here. This $2 million, I don't remember the exact term for it, the, it's a fund balance of some sort. If we had an emergency that came up, I'm going to make up, we had a bridge that went down, and Wayne County hasn't got the money, one of these little ones, and it's 2 million to replace it. Would we be legally able to tap that fund for a portion of that repair if we needed to?
To another fund? You would have to have board action to approve a transfer. That's a permanent movement of money from one fund to another for a specific reason.
But it would be legal to do that if there was what we consider to be a significant emergency?
Correct. Yes. So since we're talking about debt, the last, actually the last slide, just as a summary of our current bonded debt. So we have three bond issues. They're, they're not, they're different, but there are three bond issues in both the water department and the sewer department within the Department of Public Services. One of them will be maturing during the 25, 26 year. The numbers show the, our current year payment. It shows our new wastewater treatment plant payment, our road improvement bond, which is also part of the 2023 bond issue. And then in, you know, the, the judgment bond payment that is due this year. So that's just a summary. And.
I do want to point out though, just in the defense of the DPS department, not all of these debts are millage, millage funded debts. So I think three out of the four here are rate funded debts. So your water system debt, your sewer system debt, both of those are funds paid through, through rates.
Through revenues is what you're saying?
Through revenues.
Okay.
Yes, and the wastewater treatment plant is a millage, and the road is a millage.
Okay. All right.
Thank you.
Thank you, Teresa. Don't move yet. You can go if you want. What I'd like to do now is first, anybody in the audience, they'll have a chance, but I think we got our questions asked during as opposed to after.
That's okay.
So if we're good on the board, what I'm going to do then, are we good on the board?
I just have one quick question.
Go ahead.
So again, this is kind of new to me, so I'm sorry, Teresa, I'm catching up. With respect to the general fund that the police can draw from, that general fund millage. So let's say there were years, because I've kind of started to try to look back, there were years that those funds weren't needed by the police, that they used just their allocated and police-specific millages. That general millage, that doesn't stay in some sort of escrow fund where they can, you know, it, it's kind of not like some of the other departments that have a, a millage designated to them. It's, it goes back into the general fund. Is that correct?
So in the general fund, there are, there are two general fund millages. One of them is the allocated millage by the state of Michigan, and three police millages. And all of those are combined together when we're looking at the total revenue and, and total of that revenue plus what the police, the separate police revenue, and how that compares to their expenditures to see if they, they have a, they're balanced, or if they have a shortfall, or if they have excess, excess funds. Just so that we, we can track if using all that millage money, all those, and all those millages is enough to cover all the operating expenses for the police department.
Right. So what I'm saying is, there's the general allocated, like you said, then there's three police-specific mills, but then there's that general two mills voted, right? So if they don't, if they cover everything they need to cover in the four, then that excess of the two mills, that's just two mills general, they don't ever get to keep that money, that goes back into the general fund. So they don't ever really get an opportunity because we always draw from the four first. So they're always going to use those no matter what, and they never get an opportunity to really catch back up on those years like now because they would have given that money back.
Well, the general allocated is supposed to, is designed to go to township operations. So any money they didn't consume in their budget that was above and beyond what they're using would theoretically return to the general allocated for township operations.
Right. So what I'm getting at is if it goes back into that general allocated, and then we're making discussion points about, oh, the police are taking this money from general, well, the money was there from general at the point where, you know, they, they had a balanced budget when Joe was police chief, right?
Not, I've always taken all their money. I'm just telling you the truth. I've never not taken three millages and the other two. I, I just have never, I'm just telling you this straight. So if you guys can find that, go ahead, but I've al, I even, you know, when I was a chief, I removed every time from this township I could take, and it was all the millages.
Right, that's what I'm asking.
Yeah, there was none left over to give back. I always, my budget was always a hair more or right on with all these five different ones brought in. Correct? So there's five total that we can bring revenue in. I'm just telling you, Margaret, if you can find it, please find it.
No, that's what I'm asking.
No, no, it's never gone back. I used it all up.
Yeah, if they, if they weren't using the general allocated, then I could see them being able to build a.
That's correct.
But because they're using the entirety of the general allocated, anything they wouldn't use would return for township operations.
Correct. And I go back to 2009, so it's, it's, I mean, if you can, maybe there could have been a couple of years where I didn't use it all, maybe. But I, I wasn't, I don't recall. Maybe Bob could show me a couple of years that we found that we didn't use it all. Yeah.
We didn't use it all.
Not in, most of the years though, I used it. In most of the years.
We paid down each year.
Yeah, so. Does that help, Margaret? I'm sorry.
A little bit, it does, as long as what Mr. Glasgow is saying is correct too.
Your questions are answered, but.
Yep, no, I'm good, thank you.
Teresa, thank you very much. If you want to have a seat, that would be great. And what we'll do is, if you have a question from the audience, you want to come up and ask anything, then they will try and answer it now. It's not, we won't get back to you tomorrow if we can answer it now. I think it's the best and the most appropriate for what this hearing is. So I want to open it to the public. Anybody would like to, no? Go, come on up to the podium, go ahead. Same thing, if we could use the three to nine minute rule.
All right, Greg Carmon, 2122, sure.
Go ahead.
Okay. Question on, on the unreserved fund balance. Can, can you explain how that was established, originally established and to the extent that those funds that are in that balance can be used to, as prior, prior year resources in other departments when their, when their, when their revenues don't, when their expenditures don't meet their, or, or greater than their revenues, right? So was that, was that originally established from the general allocated millage, or some millage that wasn't a dedicated millage?
I can, I know what happened approximately 20 years ago, but go ahead, Teresa, if you.
So the general fund fund balance is accumulation from the beginning of time of the operations of the general fund, which includes the police, of in total, the general fund having excess revenue over expense, expenditures. There might have been some years where the expenditures were more than the revenue. But overall, over the, since the beginning of time, that has been accumulation of, of that number. When you see the use of prior year resources and all the other funds, they are using their restricted, and it's not from the general fund, they are using their restricted fund balance that each fund has from the, the accumulation of activity over time. Like, you know, the example is the fire equipment fund. They saved over, I don't know how many years, to be able to pay 1.7 million dollars in one shot.
Yeah.
And that's, and you have to, in order to balance the budget, you have to show that you're using prior year sources.
And just to clarify, those, that unrestricted fund balance could be utilized to balance other departments that are outside of the general fund, but I'm not aware that that's ever been the case. Were it, from an operational fund standpoint, where general fund fund balance has been used to balance a budget in another department?
If, if there's a surplus in a, in a dedicated millage, that has to be reserved only for that, for that purpose, right?
Correct.
So if you go back through time, the unreserved fund balance was established, wasn't created by dedicated millage, dedicated millages, right? It must have been created by the general allocated or one of the millages that existed that wasn't a dedicated millage then, right?
Well, general fund has a variety of different revenue sources, so that, that revenue that's in the fund balance, the, the composition of that might have come from multiple revenue sources that the general fund has. For example, you know, a portion of that could have been for excess revenue which came from revenue sharing from the state.
Okay, right.
So that all the sources of funding to general fund could have made that up.
Because that's, that would be an example, revenue sharing would be an example of an unrestricted fund, right? I mean unrestricted money, it can go to any.
For whatever the state has mandated that those funds are used for, yeah.
Okay. All right. That's, that's helpful. Could, could we go back to that slide where you, where you showed the, the annual required contribution?
For the pension?
For the pension, yeah.
It was.
Uh, let's see, this one, yeah.
Is it the dotted one?
Uh, no, the next, next, yeah, there we go. Okay. So now I know we're, we're only dealing with the, the budget, mainly dealing with the budget for this year. But I'm, I'm just curious, when I, when I look at this, this trend line, and, you know, we're at 2025, at, at a, you know, somewhere between, that's the annual required contribution that MERS requires us to put in to fund the pension, right? That's basically what that is, right? The, when you say annual employer contribution, that would be the annual required contribution that MERS is calculating. And based on different, different rates of return, you've got anywhere from 2 million to, you know, three projected, right?
Correct.
On the chart.
Right.
But MERS gives you an actual number for 2025. But MERS gives you an actual number for 2025.
And that's, this is a, this is a MERS graph.
Okay. So, so what's the actual number for 2025?
It's $2,755,000.
Okay. So, just for illustration purposes, they're showing what it would be if their rate of return was lower. Is that, is that the idea there? I mean, they're...
So, their, their assumption, MERS's assumption is that we would get, there would be a 6.93% rate of, rate of return for 2024. The actual rate of return for 2024 was just over 7%.
Right. But every year...
When they do this graph, they show different results with lower rates of return.
Okay. And then, e- every year, they're recalculating their, their annual required contribution based on their actual returns of the prior, prior year.
To a certain extent. So, the actuaries do something called smoothing, where they, they don't take maybe necessarily that exact, but they spread that, the, the rates of return, or I believe, were like a six-year term. So, they average that. So, it takes some of the fluctuation out of the highs and lows.
Okay. Well, okay, that, that's helpful. So, the thing that, of course, jumps out at, for me, at this chart, is you're, you're projecting a pretty, MERS is projecting, right? These are MERS's figures. They're projecting a, a pretty substantial increase in the annual required contribution over, over the next, say, 15 years. I mean, we're, we're going from $2 million up to, looks like maybe 3.2 or something like that, or 3.3 or somewhere in there. So, every year, that's going up. And every year, that's basically the township using current tax dollars to pay for legacy costs, right?
Correct.
So, has anyone done any projection on, on whether it's possible to meet that annual required contribution within the, within the framework of our existing millages? Or are we going to have to see a millage increase at some point to pay for that annual required contribution going up?
So, since I've been here, that has not been done yet. But it, it will be, because it needs to be done for the very reasons that you pointed out.
But are there, is there a projection on how we're going to pay for this, for this, this trend line? I mean, have we done a projection on, on what we anticipate, how we're going to, you know, pay for this? Really, it's a mandatory increase. I mean, we can't, we can't not pay the annual required contribution. We have to pay this. So, have we factored that into our long-term planning, financial planning yet? Or are we just really looking at that trend line for illustration purposes right now, and recognizing that we're going to have to deal with that each year as, as it increases?
It has been included in past projections, and they do, I do have to update them very soon.
Because what it looks like is every year, we're paying more and more of our current tax revenue for the legacy cost. Is that, is that a fair statement?
It is.
All right. Thank you.
Okay. Anybody else in the audience like to come up? Any questions? Robert? Good? Okay. Everybody set? We're set on the board, set in the audience. I will close the public meeting and return to the monthly board meeting. Next on the agenda will be, nothing and presentations. Any public comment? We'll go first. Brian, I know you have a couple. We'll do them up front. We'll go to the audience first. Anybody from the audience have a public comment? Nothing from the audience? Okay. Brian, why don't you go ahead? I know you have a couple of them.
Okay. Yeah, I've got three of them tonight.
All right.
All right. And one kind of backs up from the last meeting that came in after I was gone. So, Craig Bulacki, Park Lane, his comment was a suggestion regarding the Bridge Commission to avoid having all three residents serve in one officer role, in, serve in officer roles, make the Bridge Commission five residents, along with two Township Board members, for seven total voting members. Then have the Civil Engineer and Finance Director attend meetings to serve as consultants. All right. Next up, we have Douglas Scott from Marquette. And let me enlarge.
Marquette, Michigan? Or Marquette Road?
Living Road.
Okay.
All right. I decided to enlarge just once. It's a little bit long. Another Parkway bridge closure is fast approaching. I appreciate the supervisor's prompt responses to my inquiries thus far regarding MCL 247.292, requiring detours to be toll-free. Wayne County doesn't appear to be voluntarily willing to do so. It hasn't so far. It will take a court judgment to determine if it is required by statute. I have proposed that the township, on behalf of the residents, seek a declaratory judgment to make that determination. I know the township attorney has expressed two different opinions, first indicating that litigation would fail, and later indicating that the township is not a proper plaintiff. However, these opinions were supported by case law or judgments. Opinions are just that, they have no force of law until confirmed by a court. Attorney's opinions are often wrong. The toll bridge, eminent domain litigation was costly proof. A declaratory judgment is an expedient and cost-effective way of getting the court's determination before engaging in litigation. Often a favorable judgment makes litigation unnecessary. I suspect many, if not most residents, would be in favor of the township pursuing this action, even in light of one attorney's unsupported opinions in the contrary. I understand the township's needs, the township needs income from the bridge to support its operation, and if possible, bond repayment. I suggest the county pay the township to rent the toll bridge when it is used as a detour. MCL 41.2B specifically lists rent as an allowable user fee. The easy route is to keep the status quo, let the county back off the hook, make the folks forced to use the toll bridge, pay as always, and collect the windfall as a result. It is noteworthy that the draft budget for 2024-25 does not appear to include the additional cash or tag toll revenue from the anticipated eight-week closure. It will be extra work for the board to pursue this, but I am confident residents would be grateful for it. The county has put the cost for its negligence on our backs long enough. I appreciate your consideration. Thank you. And my final one, Mary Brezhnahan, Bellevue. The Groseal community will be facing another bridge closure in the very near future. During the closure of the bridge, Groseal residents will be forced to take the toll bridge when leaving the island. For many families that will encounter a big expense, it is not just a matter of residents going to work or leaving the island for nonessential goods. Classes, activities, doctor's appointments, meetings, elder care, and other services can be a major expense and burden to most of the community. As a resident of Groseal, I realize that island life can be difficult, or different than other cities, and we have a bridge to contend with. But our Wayne County Bridge has been neglected. It wasn't too long ago that the Wayne County Bridge was closed for 18 months. So, for one and a half years, Groseal residents were forced to cross the toll bridge. All traffic leaving the island was directed to the toll bridge. Wayne County used the toll bridge as a detour during their bridge closure at the cost of the residents. Prior to the election, and again, just recently, a resident in our community brought the detour law, MCL 247.292, to the attention of the Township Board and community. The township attorney gave her opinion that the toll bridge could not be used as a detour. According to this law, Wayne County needs to provide the residents of Groseal with a detour during their bridge closure. Groseal is a unique case, and it would be necessary to get a court judgment on this matter. The toll bridge is only detour, the toll bridge is the only detour when the county bridge is closed. We do not have any other alternate route by vehicle to leave the island. I am asking you to please take this law with further consideration on behalf of Groseal residents. Wayne County has taken advantage of our community and neglected their responsibilities long enough. Please take the extra step for this community that you represent. Thank you. That's all I have.
First off, most of the time when we get public opinion, if we can answer the question, like tonight, we would answer the question. And I feel this should be no different. I would like to just make a comment. And at this point, only I'll be making a comment to each of these, and then we're going to move on. But I think we at least owe it to them in the same structure as if they came to the, to the podium, and I agreed that if we could answer something, we would. The first one, Mr. Bulacki, that's a very good point, and we're going to be looking at that. That was raised for five individuals from the, from Groseal. And then we have the two others. So, your point is well-taken, and we're still in the works for the creation of the Bridge Commission. But this is definitely going to be a point that the Township Board will be looking at. Second thing, Mr. Scott, I, I really, I appreciate what you're saying. This is what we have to go by here. Our written opinions from our attorneys, no matter which attorney we get it from, it's not foible, and it's an attorney-client privilege that we don't give it. Now, I already gave two words from her written opinion that tried to explain, and I will say this, and I'll say it again, I don't have a problem with that, is she stated that we are not a proper plaintiff in this issue. The people of Groseal can be a proper plaintiff, but the entity of Groseal Township can't. She named a couple of reasons in her opinion, and she explained to me also that, and she was here, I think, sitting in that seat that Teresa's in one time, and explained a couple of things, which was not a written opinion. So, that, that obviously could go out to the public. But at this point, Mr. Scott, what I would do, and, and she has advised me, that this would be years in litigation, cost to the township, and because we're not a proper plaintiff, she doesn't even believe it would get passed even something like summary judgment. So, the, the whole issue here is, I have to end this. I'm sorry. I know people aren't going to be happy with it. But we pay our attorneys to keep us out of hot water. We pay our attorneys to keep us out of lawsuits. And when the attorney gives us opinion, I would be foolish, you know, I, I went to law school only for a weekend in New York to look at him for my kid, and that's as much as I got. We have an attorney on the board, and maybe she thinks otherwise than me. But when our township attorney tells us something, you have seen what's happened in the past here, and maybe some of the lawsuits that in the last 25 years we've been involved in, or even longer. So, the point is, I take her opinion seriously. I explained to the board. I sent emails out of, of what was stated and what the situation was, and I think we're all in agreement. At this point in time, we are not going to pursue it, and that's what our attorney has advised us not to do. And I would not want to get in a conundrum. And I feel for the people. I mean, I, we have four family members going across that bridge every day when it was closed before, during the week. So, I, I get it. I mean, I don't know how else, th, this was a must. We did it. The people voted on how we're going to handle it. They voted on the money they wanted to put for it. They're the ones that voted. We put the proposal out there. So, I know I'm going farther than I should, but I think that, Mr. Scott and Ms. Brezhnahan, and I understand your point, I really do. And, and if you were at this podium, I would give you the same courtesy and try and explain it to you. And I, I hope I did. I hope I explained it. So, we cannot further this. We won't be furthering it. The board would need to vote on it. And, I mean, we can even, i- if it comes down to it, we can have an agenda item next time to vote on it, and, and then put it to rest. But the point is, at this point in time, when the attorney gives me an opinion, and I have a fiduciary responsibility to everyone in Groseal, and it's to keep us out of hot water and any other wrong, bad issues, then I'm going to follow it. I, I don't have a choice, so. All right. Thank you very much for that. Brian, thanks. And we're all set. No others, correct? We're good? Okay. I guess we're only up to, seems like we've been here a while. Kevin, we're, we're only up to the consent agenda. Wow.
I would like to move that the board approved the Consent Agenda 24-097. All right? The Consent Agenda consists of the following. Minutes of the February 24th, 2025 regular meeting. Minutes of the February 24th, 2025 closed session. Check register dated through March 7th, 2025. Reappointment of commission slash committee members to, for terms starting fiscal year 2025 through 2026. Adopt, adopt the Township 25, 2025-2026 Township Board Meeting schedule, and the Community Development Monthly Report. As far as, I would like to thank all the commission and committee members that are continuing to serve on the commissions and committees. Thank you.
Is it too late for me to make a comment on that? Consent item number four?
Yes.
Please. If you want to make a comment, go ahead, sir.
All right. It might be past the point of me requesting to have that removed for now, tabled. There are commission members who have not been meeting the, the attendance requirements that are in this particular register, and I don't want to go ahead and start calling out names at this point. But I think at some point, we, as a Township Board, need to start following the rules regarding our commissions, and I think we need to revisit this issue.
As an alternative, we could reaffirm all of them and then remove who we feel...I don't know.
Mark, would that be just a, for just position of order where we're going? If we just reappoint the commission committees, and you want to bring something up or bring it to the agenda, we can always do that, talk about it. And if we find somebody wasn't doing whatever, they can always be removed. Is that okay with you?
With me, it is not. But I mean, I understand that I'm one vote up here. So, what I would like to do is have it tabled. But if it's not going to happen that way...
Well, tabling would be the same as just appointing them right now, and then looking into whatever issues you believe we have.
So, the vote on this current consent agenda is yes or no on everything, correct?
Correct. Yeah, we can't, yeah, we don't split it up. We can take it off.
Nope. I, I'd like to take it off.
We could take it off. And would you like to move it to an action item, or would you like it tabled?
I would just like to table it for this moment.
Brian, can we, wait a minute. We have to vote on it.
Well, you've already made a motion with it involved.
Right, right.
Now, you're in the middle of a motion.
How about we do this? So, Mark, would it be...
You could, go ahead. You could vote it down, and then...
Yeah. Mark, how about we do this? Are you, would this be palatable for all on the board, then? If we vote the consent agenda in, and then we just look into whatever the issue is, it, it, there's no difference between not having this now, because reappointment means they're still here. Doesn't mean everybody's gone today because we don't vote on the reappointment.
I understand.
They're already here because they're there. Does that make sense? So...
That part makes sense, yes.
Yeah. So, that part is no different. So, if we do a, an agreement on this consent agenda, then we can bring up, and to an action item and a discussion item, whatever issues you feel we have.
Well, I think, to Mark's point, I, I do understand what, it's, it's, I don't know if it's the right term, but it is a different thing to not reappoint someone than it is to fire someone.
Of course. So, so we're reappointing and then looking into, as a discussion item, because we got to have a discussion item for the board.
So, this, to be fair, this isn't the entirety of the commissions either, the commission members. This is just people on certain terms.
Correct.
Right.
Brian, can I withdraw the, can I withdraw the...
Reappointment?
No, the whole thing.
I seconded that. I'd withdraw my second if I could do that, too.
Does that mean we're not going to let the commissions decide when they feel that they need to remove someone? Like, we, we're not going to leave them with any authority at all.
I totally align with Mickey on that one.
I think we need to at least talk about it. So, let's, why don't we put a discussion item on? Reappoint these people is fine. Put a discussion item on. If you find they are not going along with whatever the ordinance states they're supposed to do, or we feel there's somebody that needs to go, then we do it.
Or we ask the commissions if they think if there's somebody that they think should go, too.
Well, we can do it in any way you want.
Or adjust the ordinance to support that as well, whatever the case is.
Well, you just reappoint them now, and everybody reappointing is, they're on. They're already on.
Can I withdraw the motion? And then...
You got me in a spot that now I'm not sure if you can.
So, to be fair, if this were every member of every commission we were reappointing, and we wanted to table it so that we could discuss not reappointing people, that would be one thing. But this is only like a third of commissioners. So, to not reappoint them because we might not appoint some of them, but to let everyone else who's not performing remain on the commission.
And that's not what my intent is. So, let's just move forward. I'll, my, I guess I will vote, how I'm going to vote on the entire consent agenda.
Okay. And then, you bring to me a discussion item, and we'll put it on the board, on the agenda.
Would, would, I'll, I'll have something in order for next meeting.
Oh, that?
Yeah, that sounds fine.
Is that fair?
Sure.
Okay. Then we'll do that. Because, Jamison, you make a good point. I just don't see negating everyone for a possibility of looking into some. Is that any chance?
Yeah.
Okay. All right. So, anything else? With nothing, all in favor of Consent Agenda 24-097?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
Aye.
Okay. One opposed. Very good. Okay, action items. Bill, I think you have the first one. Application for Detroit Institute of Okay, action items. Bill, I think you have the first one, application for Detroit Institute of Arts Partners in Public Art Program. Do you have that in front of you, Bill?
Not at the moment, I didn't realize I was doing that.
Not at the moment, okay, so what I'll do.
Wait, you know what, can I just click on it?
I have it right here. Whatever you.
I got it right here, too.
Thank you.
Okay.
Got it for him?
Yep.
Okay, go ahead.
Based upon the recommendation from Airport Commerce Park Commission, the Township Board of Trustees approves the application for participation in the Partner in Public Art Act, Public Art Program commits to the location of the public art at eight, at 9537 Grow Road, Building 28, and agrees to maintain the public and add per the program's requirements.
Second.
Hey, is, Janelle, would you like, is she still there, Janelle? Um, would you like to just come up a second, please? Can you just give a quick, maybe explanation of this, just so the entire board understands what this is about?
Sure, I'd be happy to. Hello, everyone.
Hello.
So, this is going to be a similar program to the one that the DDA did down on Macomb Street. However, the Detroit Institute of Arts is actually partnering with the Partners in Public Art, and it's for facilities that are owned by townships. So, this will be a grant application for the year 2025. In order to move forward, you have to have a certified resolution from the board, and they'll make a decision based on three cities or townships in the Down River area, or Wayne County.
And this is going, they're going to put a mural on the building on Grow Road here, the small? Is that correct? That, what do you call that? I'm sorry, what is that called?
Um.
Is it like a, a storage?
It's a storage facility.
It's a storage, a small building on Grow Road near Meriden.
Yes, correct.
And they'll put a mural and a painting on there?
That's the.
Make it look nicer.
That's the intent, yes.
Okay, thank you very much. All right, are there any questions for Janelle while she's here? Anybody? Everybody good? Thank you, Janelle, very much. Okay, action item number one, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
So, Joe, DIA is a client, they are, we are aligned with our client, so I can vote aye on it. I just have to get that into the record.
Oh, okay. Very good. All right. Then motion carried, and Brian, whatever you got to do with Mickey's issue? Okay. Action item number two, ZBA member appointment.
That would be me. So, the Grozeal Township Board hereby approves the appointment of Richard Hopper to the Zoning Board of Appeals.
Second.
The ZBA currently has one vacant full-time position and two alternate positions that are open. Myself, the Community Development Director, Ross Quirrell, and the zoning administrator, Brock, interviewed Mr. Hopper on February 7th, following an interview, and it was agreed unanimously that Mr. Hopper would be a great fit for the zoning board for the full-time position. I would like to go ahead and have him appointed to the zoning board. Mr. Hopper comes to us as a 20-year resident of Grozeal. He has over 30 years of experience in municipal government, 20-plus years in law enforcement as a deputy chief of the City of Taylor. He is now the HR Director of the City of Taylor, dealing with budgets of 60 million plus. He's also a, builds homes and so forth in other states, so he is well aware of what zoning laws and I guess zoning situation will bring up. And I believe he'd be a great asset to that commission, and I'm requesting the vote, the vote, yes, I appoint him to the board.
Any questions for Mark? Action item number two, ZBA member appointment, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carried. Number three, same thing, Mark?
Yes, sir.
ZBA, I'm sorry.
Nope, that's me, yep.
ZBA alternate member appointment.
Well, the ZBA, same thing, we have a, we're filling one vacant position on the zoning board for the alternate, and that's going to be Kyle DeBucier. Uh, he's got 10-plus years on the island, he was a former trustee. I believe he made some sound judgment calls as a board member when he was here on the board. Uh, he's currently the manager of West Cross Gardens with his wife Jennifer, and he's also a digital communications executive in the nonprofit sector, uh, outside of government, so I think he's also going to make a, a good member, a good asset to that board as an alternate when we need him. And I would like to get approval to vote him in as the alternate for our board.
Okay, any questions for Mark? Okay, action item number three, ZBA alternate member appointment, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carried. No discussion items tonight. Clerk report, you are up.
Okay, good evening. So, the Rec Commission met last Thursday to reelect the chair, vice chair, and secretary, and then to initiate more in-depth Island Fest Planning, which will be taking place probably in April, as a, it'll be a study session, and probably not the entirety of the Recreation Commission, but it'll still be a public meeting, so. Um, the Bicycle and Pedestrian Advisory Committee will be meeting on the 20th, and I'll keep it brief tonight. That's all I have to report.
Good, sir. All right, Treasurer's report.
The Treasurer's report. All 2024 unpaid real property taxes are now considered delinquent and must be paid directly to Wayne County with penalty fees. The Wayne County online payment link, which can be found on the Treasurer's section of grozeal.com website as well, has the current 2024 delinquent tax information and the payment options available by mail, by phone, in person, or at Wayne County's kiosk inside the Sunoco Brownstown located at 21980 Sibley Road. To date, the township has collected 97.2% of the total 2024 taxes, with all distributions made in a timely manner. Thank you for paying your taxes. Pet, 2025 pet licenses are still available at the Treasurer's Office. The pet tag license fee is now $12 for the remainder of 2025. Please be sure to provide proof of current rabies certificate for your pet when applying for a pet license. Thank you.
All right, sir, thank you very much. Trustees' report, we'll start off with William.
Thank you. I sit on two commissions, the Airport Commerce Park Commission and the Planning Commission. The Airport Commission has been quite, quite active. They, they've been dealing with runway improvements, taxiway improvements. They've been looking at equipment, a bat wing 15-foot or a little smaller one to help them to maneuver through tight spots. They've got a bigger one. They've also hosted the Rock Half Marathon. I'd like, since Janelle is here, to ask if she might just briefly explain what she's doing. They, they are very active, and it's worthy of commendation.
Hey, again. Hello. So, just, I think you wanted me to touch just on the Rock CF race, then?
That was good.
Sure, no problem. So, this was actually the 14th annual, wasn't it, Doug? For the Rock CF, and we actually, we start the 5K at the airport, and the half actually starts at the high school, so it's just a really awesome event to be involved in, and seamless, actually, and Emily does a great job with it, and it's really nice to see the community coming together. I think that's all I really had to say. Unless you want me to add anything else? Perfect.
Thank you.
I know everyone wants to get home.
Thank you.
Okay, perfect.
Moving to the Planning Commission, they've had a new issue to deal with. Some of us might recall, a few years ago, Westcroft Gardens was having an attempt to expand development in their properties with some real estate, and some of the neighbors had some serious objections, and they decided to back off. Conversations have been forthcoming that were, I think there's a possibility of amelioration on that, and that item will be on their agenda this coming meeting that they have. That concludes my report.
Thank you, Bill. Mr. Mills?
Yes, sir, thank you. We, we will have a Zoning Board of Appeal to be heard on March 25th at 6:00 PM. And that's really all I have right now for the Zoning Board of Appeals. Thank you.
All set, Mark? All right, Margaret?
So, I have a few things I wanted to cover tonight. The first item I want to address is to commend our police department in their handling of the incident at the high school. Their expertise and efficient coordination with the school administration had the incident resolved rather quickly. So, another thing, you should also go to Border Patrol, Michigan State Police, and Airport Authority. MSP and Airport Authority supported us with their bomb dogs, and they were brought in to do a sweep through the school to confirm the facility was safe, and our officers, along with Border Patrol, assisted that team in checking perimeter and interior. I'd also like to extend my compliments to the Grozeal School Administration for how they handled and coordinated their efforts with GIPD. Collaboration and preparedness through this incident, it made it go to a positive closure. The next item, like almost all the board members here, I ran on public safety being a priority, and I also ran on fiscal responsibility, so I understand the feelings of a lot of people, but it's my intention to be sure this community maintains our PD leadership. So, while it's not a popular request with the board, I'll be asking for salary increases at, as a first step to address gaps in our PD command staff salaries. Uh, we cannot lose any of our officers to outside communities, and we need to be able to attract talented officers to this community, and they need to know that they have my support at least as a liaison and a resident who feels they are a priority. So, these are the same men and women who supported us during COVID, and the same team that is stepping up and supporting the staff, staffing gap that just got a little bit bigger for the PD with another officer going to be off, with an off-duty injury. So, our gaps were there long before our current command staff took over, and while I could wait a year to allow for budget corrections through several changes being reviewed for implementation by our commission, I'm choosing to support not only our leaders in the police department, but I feel keeping my promise to the residents who voted for me by putting public safety first. And then my last thing I want to point out is, um, I want to recognize our township supervisor and township manager. I don't think people fully understand, specifically maybe some residents, um, how difficult their job is with respect, with respect to our infrastructure, and how many moving parts there are to that. And, you know, they receive so many questions and so many requests in addition to dealing with Wayne County. And both of these gentlemen, along with honestly, all the people at the Township Hall who have to answer questions, and they take the calls with these questions, and it's really easy to armchair quarterback things, but I truly want to just say, I promise you, the real work is not as easy as some may think. So, I just felt like I wanted to use part of my time to, to mention that as well. So, thank you.
All set, Margaret, thank you very much. Before we go to Mickey, Kevin has one more thing.
Actually, two things. I'm on the, I serve on the DPS Board or Commission, and we have a meeting tomorrow evening at 7 o'clock. And most importantly, I would like to thank Teresa McLaughlin for heading up with, with everybody else in Township Hall. Derek and the managers, thank you very much for putting in, going above and beyond to create a fiscally sound budget for this year with a lot of unknowns that really, I, having seen it take, seeing what you've done and what has taken place, I do not want to not say thank you so much for doing that. And it, I, I would like the public to know that we, that Teresa and Derek and the board and others have put in a lot of time to make this work, and I appreciate that, and thank everybody. Thank you, Teresa.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you very much, Kevin. Okay.
Okay. Hey, the Fire Commission, I think it's still out on the website that the meeting will be Thursday at 5:00. We're moving it a day early to make sure we have a quorum, we have some people going out of town, so it'll be, excuse me, Wednesday, March 12th at 5:00 PM for open space. It's really nice, we're actually, we were down one person, and then Teresa Weeks is actually leaving due to her schedule, so I really want to thank her for all her service and appreciate her. That leaves us with two openings, and we actually got four applicants, which is amazing, so it's so nice to see the community reaching out to volunteer. They're going to be interviewing, I think, tomorrow. Um, and I think, I think that's it for me.
You're set, all right. Thank you, Mickey. Derek, you are up, Township Managers' report.
Uh, good evening, members of the board, as well as the Township's residents. Just a couple of quick items for this evening. Uh, first one, we did get some phone calls today in DPS about when yard waste starts, uh, because it's generally the first of April, which falls on a Tuesday. There were questions about whether the Monday service would have yard waste or not. It's actually the first full week in April that we have yard waste starting, so it'll actually be the following week, which I believe is right around the 7th that yard waste will start. So, um, that's on the website, and I believe we were going to get something out on Code Red with regards to that as well, uh, the first full week in April for yard waste. I know Open Space Greenways is in the process of trying to organize a Dump the Junk event, which is very, very popular. Um, they're trying to work around the schedule of the Free Bridge closure, um, so that we're not bringing those dumpsters across the Pay Bridge, which might lead itself to a delay. Usually, we have Dump the Junk in the spring, like, middle of April and April. It's probably going to be later this year as a result of that.
You do think they should delay it then, Derek?
I think they probably should, yep. Some of those dumpsters can get fairly heavy, and we don't want to put anything across the toll bridge that we, we don't have to. So, I know there was some conversation about that, so.
Was, and it makes sense if we can schedule something to avoid that. So, okay.
Yes. There has been a lot of conversation about bridge passes. So, the toll bridge currently, they do not have bridge passes available. I don't believe they have any in stock, but also with the, the transaction occurring here in the next couple of weeks where the township's going to be buying the bridge, the agreement that you sign for your bridge pass is with the, or currently would be with the bridge company. The agreement would need to be with Grozeal Township, so instead of signing an agreement with the toll bridge for two weeks, they just pulled the ability to do that, knowing that that agreement has to be with the township, uh, moving into the future. Um, so there aren't any bridge passes available. Uh, we have placed the order, that order was placed, I think, the day after the board meeting that it was authorized. Soon as those are available, we'll, we'll let the residents know that they're available for those that need bridge passes. We have a list going in administration currently, so if you want to call Township Hall Administration, we can put your name on that list, and we can contact you when they are available. Um, one other item worth noting is that the existing bridge passes that you have should work once the transition takes place. There is an issue that we're trying to resolve where the information in the system for your existing bridge pass may need to be repopulated. So, what that means is that you'll have to go onto our website and enter your current address, contact information, sign an authorization, electronic signature, to allow the township to bill your credit card, because your previous authorization was for the toll bridge to bill your credit card, and then re-enter your existing tag ID. So, our, the toll bridge vendor that handles the bridge passes, our website, hosting company, and our IT company all working on developing a module that'll go on our website, where you'll have to go and re-enter that information. We're trying to get that up and running as quickly as possible. Um, as soon as that is available, we'll let the residents know. Brian will get the word out. Um, we'll also have a, a, a kiosk here at Township Hall for those individuals that don't maybe have access to the internet, or have computers at home, or are not comfortable. They can come in and put that information into the system there. Um, so that is another one of the hurdles that we're trying to overcome with the transition between the two, uh, but that is in process, and we hope to have resolution on that here fairly shortly. fairly shortly. As far as conversation online about bridge tolls, I know there was a lengthy conversation on Facebook, the tail end of last week, when the information was put on the website and on Facebook for the bridge tolls. Despite a lot of that conversation, the bridge tolls have not changed. They're the same as they were and have been for probably the past year and a, or year and a half. The township has adopted the same bridge toll rates as the bridge company had, and in addition to that, I think we've made some clarification on some of the commercial toll limits that maybe those rates weren't available, but they are now through the posting that we made. So I just wanted to clarify that. The bridge tolls have, amounts have not changed. They are the same. We have received the toll bridge, I'm sorry, the Cell Tower RFP packets from, I believe, two vendors that responded to our RFP. We received one that was late, so I haven't done an analysis of them yet. I believe the bids were last Wednesday or Thursday, but once we have that information in a concise format with a summary, we'll get that to the board, and then we'll schedule a time to talk about it at the board meeting as far as what steps you want to take, if you want to conduct interviews, if you want to rebid, things of that sort. So that'll be forthcoming. The township currently has an advertisement out for bridge toll takers and office workers, and that's for short-term temporary employment for the two months that the Free Bridge will be closed. So if you have an interest in employment at the toll bridge for a short period of time, about 60 days, information on how to apply for that's on the website. And once again, the purpose of that is to have additional staff to help accommodate the additional need at the bridge when the Free Bridge closes. So that's out there. If you want, if you're interested in employment for a couple of months, please take a look at that. And then Teresa and I have been fairly busy in facilitating the transition between the toll bridge ownership by the bridge company and Groseal Township. So yes, we are working diligently every day with regards to all the various things that have to be addressed. It's a, excuse me, a fairly large business that we're transitioning that has a lot of different moving parts that we have to take into consideration. So between all those different issues, it's keeping us fairly busy, but we're getting through it, and we hope for a seamless transaction and transition between the existing owner and Groseal Township. So that is all I have for this evening. Oh, one last thing. For those of you that, for those of you that like to give blood, there is an event in Gibraltar on April 11th. And I believe it's being put on by the Gibraltar School District and the Wind Out of Andron Nation. It's going to be at the Gibraltar Community Center on April 11th from 10:00 a.m. to 4:00 p.m. That's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you, Derek. Just a couple of items. Derek, thank you for going over the bridge passes. You've explained that quite well. We're also going to be putting out more messages through Facebook regarding the bridge. We're going to be in the Groseal Grand. We're going to time this, so next issue that comes out, we're going to have the same information. It's on groseal.com about the costs, about the commercial vehicles, how we're going to do it, and so on and so forth. But thank you for that explanation. I also want to thank the reserve officers in the police department, the run that they had last weekend, they did an excellent job. I got a lot of comments on how professional they are, and they're very helpful, and they do a lot of, you know, extra work that obviously we couldn't afford in overtime to make things safe and do it the right way. So thank you again to all the reserve police officers that work that. The bridge is still on schedule for April 1st to close. The county has not given us anything. As I stated in my Facebook posts, if they tell us at noon it changes, you're going to get it at 12:10. So I promise we're going to get any information, any changes. It's still on a two-month program for the repairs, and everything is on the website for the cost, for the fees, for the process, for the commercial vehicles. Any other questions, you can always call us, myself or Derek. We've been handling all kinds, but we hope to put more information. Like I said, we're going to use the Groseal Grand for the, the, I'm not sure if it's April or if it'll be, it'll be Marches, but it, we will hit the next, the next one that comes out. So anyway, thank you very much. Is there any other, any other issues from the board? All right, then I'll entertain a motion for adjournment. Oh, oh, oh! Tried to sneak that one by you guys, didn't I? And I'm the one that created this. Oh, no. No, no. I'm sorry. I missed the public comment. Anybody? Don't tell me no. Somebody's got to come up. Bob, just come up and say something.
I'm not, I'm not going to make this lengthy, but that was very good presentation. The reason I want to do this publicly is because I think other people are going to have the same questions where you're having to ask.
Make your phone, Bob.
Sorry. Is it on? No, there you go.
On?
Yeah.
Okay. Like I said, there, I think other people may have the same question, so I'm going to do this real quick publicly. I have passes right now. I have money in an account, so I will be able to use the bridge and go through without any problems, correct?
So the, the information about the deposit that you paid for your tag will be transferred over.
Okay.
The information about the balance on your card will be transferred over.
Okay.
What you're likely going to need to do is to re-enter your information into the system that we formulate to make sure that, that card, the information about your account is, is in a database that the township has access to. So that will be something that you will have to do to ensure that that works properly.
Where is that procedure?
So it'll be on our website, but we'll provide that soon as it's finalized.
I will put that out, Bob, on Facebook as soon as we have that.
Okay.
And we will put it on all the platforms.
Right. So, so the companies that, the company that hosts that system at the bridge is, is developing, along with our IT group, basically a module that'll go on our website. So you'll be able to enter your information, Bob Zalasko, this is my address, this is my tag number, and then your credit card information and an authorization for Groseal Township to charge your card for the tolls. That is what you're going to have to fill out to link that card with the system down there. So that will have to be populated in order to make sure that that works.
I'm trying to eliminate, like a lot of other people, sending out credit card all the time. The present program was very convenient. I wrote a check, I put my money in there, and when it paid down, I just reimbursed it and kept my account out. Will I still be able to do that without using a credit card? Because I really don't want to use a credit card.
Yeah, whatever, whatever system you used in the past should still work.
So I can submit a check to the bridge company, it'll go into my account, and then automatically be paid down every time I go across the bridge.
That should be still the case.
You'll be submitting it to us.
Yeah.
The issue is, the issue, and just to explain this further, the issue is Groseal Township does not have authorization to receive the credit card information that you've provided to a company under the guise that you're providing it only to them.
This is a credit card issue.
It's a credit card issue.
So basically, what, if I'm going to follow the same format I did before, there, it really isn't going to be an issue. I will just write you a check, put it in the account.
Right. The toll bridge company can't give us the credit card information. They're not permitted to do that.
They, they don't have any credit card information from me, and I'm hoping I don't have to give any.
Teresa just corrected me to correct you. The check won't go to the bridge company, the check will go to Groseal Township.
That's what I was saying. That's fine. That's fine. Okay. Thank you.
I at least know where the money's going.
I'll make the check out to Joe. Okay? Thanks.
I also, Bob-
Give him some cash, Bob.
Hold on. Bob, come back up here a second, please. This is, this is important. I know it sounds a little odd, but-
You can't subpoena Bob.
Okay, I'm subpoenaing Bob. Doug just left. What I wanted to say is, I stand corrected on the issue. If I give the wrong information, I have no problem correcting it. The years that I was police chief, I was advised by the finance director that we ate up all the tax money, and one of the gentlemen, I don't, mathematically had shown that a couple of the years, I don't want to mention his name, Bob, but has shown that that mathematically probably didn't happen. I'm not going to get into it, but when I said that everyone, every year I had, there were some that we went into the fund balance that Teresa was trying to explain what you're talking about, just to balance our budget, we had to go in there. But every year I was advised, we ate up all the tax money, and there was a few years in there, so I stand corrected. If we had a few years where some of the money didn't come to me from, that's here nor there. My point is, I stated every year I was there that it was given or taken from all of the tax revenue, and a few years that wasn't correct. So I just want to make sure I give, what's important though, is unfortunately, we know this year, and Teresa, you can confirm this, that 100% of the tax dollars from those five millages go to the police department this year.
That's correct.
All right. That's, I want to make sure I corrected myself. And Doug, I know you're, you left, but I'm sure you're going to hear this, so I apologize to you stating that, but that is-
Well, you weren't all incorrect, Joe. You were, your, your statement was still correct. If I, you want me to respond to that?
No, I just wanted to stand there to confirm what I'm saying, and unfortunately, I'm putting you on the spot.
No, you're not.
But we were, we did work on our budgets, and we did find, but that's irrelevant tonight. We have a new, this is years ago, but if I stated something that wasn't correct, I need to correct it, because that's what I like to do.
And Teresa can correct me on this if I'm wrong, but in the beginning, the first years, when we got the millage and we got the additional monies to supplement the general fund, we did not take all the money the first couple of years. It was paid down over a period of time.
That was before I came.
No, no, you were, that's what we were doing, and you were, you were doing it correctly. That's what we did in the budget. In other words, if we donate, if we alleviate one mill off of the two mills for the first year, we're not going to use the whole, whole millage. We're going to draw a portion of that, approximately $200,000 a year annually, that will increase and compound each year. And eventually, as that money is put into the general fund every year, we will eventually draw it all back out at the end of the period when we will have to go out for another millage. Am I correct?
He wasn't, yeah.
Okay, okay. No, I don't, I-
If you didn't use all of the police millage, then yes, that, that's sort of been assigned to the police department?
Correct.
Although it's going to be hard to-
It was kind of like-
If you look at each year's activity, it'll be hard to track that because the fund balance was not, not separated like that in the past.
I understand, and it was the general fund. But there, there were years where we didn't draw the total amount out.
And that was, that was my point, and I stated every year, that's all I want to get through here. I don't want to get into the past.
And that's correct, so, okay.
Thank you. That's all I wanted, wanted to do and say that I corrected myself, and I want to make sure we're good. All right, now, one more. Yes, sir.
Greg Carroms in 21228 East Shore. I just want to reinforce the points that Supervisor Porcelli made on, on the bridge issue of the residents that had commented about the possibility of litigation over the, the payment of tolls. I just will say that on behalf of the Groseal Taxpayers Association, we did return, retain an attorney who we asked to research that issue, and our attorney came to the same conclusion that there is no case law in Michigan that, that presented any evidence that, that there would be a likelihood of success in, in a lawsuit against Wayne County to force them to pay those tolls. And now, as, as you point out, though, Supervisor, your attorney said that, that residents of Groseal apparently do have standing to file such a lawsuit, and if there are individuals in the community that want to do that, they, they could pursue that. But I, as a taxpayer personally, would, would support your opinion that it would be throwing good, good money after bad to, to try to litigate something that we, we don't have any reason to believe would be successful. Also, the bigger picture point is if the township was in a litigation against Wayne County, we'd be litigating against the very entity that we're asking over the next possibly 20 years to invest up to $200 million into the repair and replacement of the Wayne County Parkway Bridge, because we know that bridge is going to have to be replaced. And there are varying opinions on how long it'll last after the, the upgrades and maintenance that's going to be done next year, but I think that the consensus of the engineers that have been advising Wayne County is that it is going to have to be replaced at some point within at least the next 20 or so years, and at a cost that we know has been estimated to be approximately $200 million. So in that time period, there's also, I believe the, the latest number is that they're projecting for 2026 when they do this maintenance. It's somewhere upwards around $50, $50 million. And in addition to that, we know there are, I think, five bridges on Groseal currently that need a couple to several million dollars of, of, of maintenance that the county will have to take on. So when you add all that up, we're asking, this community is asking Wayne County to allocate, you know, approximately $200 million to bridges over in, in the coming couple decades, and these are the same people that we're thinking we would have to sue if we were going to get into this issue of, of payment of, of those toll fares. And I just think that that's not realistic, given where we are with the township's position and having to engage with the county as a partner in solving the issues with the Parkway Bridge. And I don't think it would be a wise, a wise course of action to antagonize and litigate against the very people that were asking to put in a couple hundred million dollars of improvements on the Parkway Bridge. But again, as you point out, if there's a group of citizens out there that want to take this on, they're more than willing to do it.
Thank you, Greg. And I just want to make one comment, and we'll be down here tonight. I didn't realize you went and got a, an opinion from an individual, but thank you. Thank you for sharing that. And the other issue, the only thing that I have, I guess, if you want to say, given out from her written opinion, is not just we probably couldn't win it, we can't be a plaintiff. We, we don't qualify, whatever judicial legal way to do this, we don't qualify. So anyway, thank you for your information.
That's good, that's good info. That I, I, that's new information to me. I wasn't aware that-
That's why she's a municipal attorney, and that's what she does, and, but thank you for your understanding and giving that information. That was helpful.
All right. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Anybody else? Okay, now, oh, did you have your hand up? Oh, I thought you, I thought you raised your hand. Like, you don't have to raise your hand, just shout it out. They do. Okay, can I get a motion to adjourn?
Motion.
Move. Second, on favor. Aye. Pose, carried. That ends the meeting.